Lady and gentlemen, we would like to begin Innovative City Forum, the special session co-organized by the Japan Foundation Asia Center and Morri Art Museum. This session is entitled “Media Art Goes Public.” I would now like to introduce the speakers for this session. From the Penny W. Stamps of Art and Design at University of Michigan, Dean Gunalan Nadara Jan. Founder of Team Lab, Mr. Toshiuki Inoko. Professor of Keio University Graduate School of Media Design and guest professor of Kanazawa Institute of Technology and the project professor, synthesia artist game designer, Mr. Fetsia Mizuguchi. The session will be moderated by Mr. Nanjo, the director of Morri Art Museum. Mr. Nanjo, please.
We’d like to start the afternoon session. This morning, from the perspective of creative city, we thought about how to perceive of cities and the relationship between culture and city and arts and city is what we thought about. In the afternoon, we’d like to discuss art. Innovative City Forum is such that we deal with design and architecture, not only art. So this time, we have a lot of artists. And for one thing, bearing in mind the Olympic Games, Olympic and Paralympic Games coming up, what kind of culture and artistic activities will take place going forward? And when we think of this, one of the important factors is art. And we’re not thinking of art in small galleries. We’re thinking about art going to Tokyo and going to the city and going public. And because of the times we are in, a new technology will be harnessed and we will be doing what we could not do in the past in developing art. And we think that that is the kind of art which will be emerging. It’s our expectation and our projection. And so we have a lot of people in media art. Professor Gunalan Nadara Jan is the first speaker. I met with him before the year 2000, and that is what he told me. But after that, at the Singapore Biennale, when I was involved in curation, I met him there. And he was La Salle University Gallery Director then. And then he went to the United States after that. And he is dean of the Penny W. Stamps of Art and Design at the University of Michigan now. Of course, he still has ties with Singapore. Singapore’s Art Science Museum is an organization for which he is board member. So his activities are wide-ranging. And as for his job, rather than teaching, he says he’s a media art curator. So in various forms, he has a wide area of knowledge. And so he’ll be discussing art and the city with examples, I hope. So the floor is yours, Professor Gunalan.
Thank you, Nanjo-san. Welcome, everybody. I know some of you have had lunch already, and so probably you are not as... You’re happy, but you are also slightly sleepy, so I’ll try to keep you excited. So my talk is going to be about the intersections of media arts and the city. And I’m specifically looking at media arts. And by media arts, I mean artworks that use technology either for the production or for the distribution of the work itself. And I’ve been curating and working in media arts for about 20 years now. And I must say that from the very beginning of media arts, there’s this kind of intimate relationship between media arts, that is, art using technology, and the city. And what I would like to do today is to really show you some examples, especially from Asia, where these kinds of connections are being shown. Next slide, please. So I think that the urban, social, and technological dynamics of the city allows it to be used as a canvas, meaning something that you can make art on, material, art that you can make with, and site, art that you make, the place in which you make the art. So media arts, especially because technological art forms allow for you to program the work in a way that connects it to the dynamic movements and rhythms and changes of the city. So it’s very important to understand that the connection is intimate because there are some fundamental similarities between how technological arts operates and how the city functions. I also want to highlight to you the way in which, especially in Asia, there is a big rise in the number of community-based media collectives or artists who are working in media arts, who are coming together as a collective, as a group, to work on the city with communities directly. I’ll show you some examples of them also. And I also want to highlight the issue of technological appropriateness, meaning that some of the technologies that are available in some parts of Asia are very different in complexity and advance, how advanced they are. So for example, if you think about the technologies that are available in Hong Kong and Taiwan and in Japan and Seoul, it’s very different from the kinds of technologies that are available in Indonesia, in the Philippines, in Thailand. And part of this has an impact on the kinds of artworks that are available and that are being made in these countries. And I’ll try and show some of that in my talk. Next slide, please. So an important artist group that I want to highlight and I’ll talk about a bit later is the SARAI. SARAI is an art group, an art collective, a media arts collective based in New Delhi. And they’ve been in existence for a long time, but they’ve been constantly using the idea of city as studio. Meaning, if artist works in a studio, what does it feel like? And what does it mean when the city itself is the studio in which the artist works? Where the artist uses the city as the canvas, as the material, and as a site for making? And I’ll talk a bit about SARAI’s city as studio concept in a bit later, but I want to move on to talk about some examples. Next slide, please. I want to firstly highlight an interesting Korean, South Korean art group called John Pasang Media Arts Group. It’s a collective of about five people who have been doing some absolutely stunning technological works. And these are works that are created for the city, with the city in mind and with the city audience as an important part of their creation. So the next slide, please. If you would play the video. This is a work called “Hyper Matrix” by the group. It’s a kinetic installation, and you will see what I mean by it when the video plays. The first video, yeah, thank you. If you could enlarge it, please. The work was done in the Hyundai Pavilion. So it was a commissioned work, but it’s using individual steel boxes that are then programmed to create a number of images that are popping out of the wall itself. If you would go to the next slide, please. So this is an example of an art group that actually has access to really high-level technology and is programming it in a way that is specific to that culture. And this particular work is again by the same group, John Pasang, but it’s actually in the city itself, the Gangnam Square in Seoul. So would you play the video? This work consists of a 6x6x6-meter glass cube within which there are LED, a series of LED lights that are moving up and down. So they are programmed to function to create individual kinds of, very specific kinds of formations that are aesthetically pleasing. They are located in the city, and it is meant to be a spectacle in the city proper. If you go back to the slides, please. There are quite a number of videos, so I want to go back to... The next slide, please. So next, I want to highlight a group, Dimensions+, which is a group of two artists, one from Hong Kong and another from Taiwan. So Dimensions+ also works with the city as the site where they make works. And they are very interested in the idea of play and the intersections of education, public life, and interaction. So maybe you can go to the next slide? If you could play the video, please. This is called “Hugging Arts,” which is a public installation. If you go down, you will see the video. That’s the video, please. So it’s a box that says “art,” and it opens up when you start hugging it. And it records the reactions of people who are interacting with it. As you can see, it opens up a small little balloon that... So it senses the touch. The work senses the touch, and then when you hug it, it actually opens up. So you get the point. Again, these are works that are made for the public. It’s made for public interaction, and that’s the primary basis for how they function. Next slide, please. This is another work by the same group, Dimensions+. It’s called “Park Life.” It’s an amazing work, which actually involves individual... A playground with individual pieces. Every one of them is connected in some way to... Connected online, and it gets energized and moved by chatroom dialogues and movements on the internet. So it’s creating a kind of dynamic connection between the actual interactions of people playing in the playground, the kids playing in the playground, and the traffic of movements and messaging that is going on online. The next slide, please. Now, I wanted to show the work of one of my favorite artists, Wit Pim Khatenapong. Wit, I discovered Wit’s work a long, long time ago, and when he was still making some really fascinating things. And over the years, I’ve noticed how his work has continued to become much more public, much more ambitious, and far more... Initially, his works were very technologically savvy, but his works have become more and more simple in technology, but far more exciting and far more public in how they are functioning. So he’s an artist from Thailand, and I’ll show you some of his works. Next slide, please. This is the world’s slowest SMS billboard that he did for the Singapore Art Night in 2010, actually. Not 2000, but 2010. So basically, what happens is that if you go to the next slide, what you have is prominently, there is a number which you can call. And when you call and you send a message, that message is actually being changed by people physically, one by one. So each time you send a message, you are used to the idea of instant messaging, but every message will take about 20 to 25 minutes to actually complete. So when someone sends a message, it will transform. The message will be delivered, but the message will take about 25 minutes. And sometimes, if the people who are changing and are tired or not interested or they don’t like the message, they can say, “I’m not doing this.” So it’s an interesting relationship between the idea of instantaneous, instant messaging and the relationship to actual interaction with people, which I think Wit has continued to be interested in. Next slide, please. This is a work that he did for the Singapore Biennale, and I know that Nanjo-san knows this very well. It’s an amazing work. Basically, what he did was he blew up a very large image of a Google map of Singapore. And he had people come and post small tag messages on each part of Singapore that they had a personal or an interesting relationship with. And over the period of the exhibition, each of these messages were being filled. And certain parts, as you can see, have more intense messaging than other places. So it almost creates a map of significance where people feel that they have a relationship to, a space that they have a relationship to. So it’s a really interesting work that deals with the relationship between city as a map and city as memory. Next slide, please. This is... I really like this work. It’s got less to do with the city and much more to do with what you find in the city and how Wit has been doing these fabricated paper sculptures of fruits. You know, those of you who know Thailand and those of you who know Bangkok especially, it just has got amazing fruit markets. And Wit was very interested in sharing the experience of fruit markets, but creating a kind of a prefabricated... Next slide, please. So this is how it starts. These are paper-fabricated things that are then folded into... So he brings together two important parts of what you find in cities. Artifacts that are paper crafts that are made, crafts that are made, and fruits that you find, natural versus artificial, and how they are displayed in some ways. And it’s again a very interesting, thoughtful work in relation to technology. Next slide, please. If you’ll play the video. This is a work called “Maya Rab.” “Maya Rab,” and my Thai friends probably would pronounce it better, but it’s a public installation that he made. It’s a kinetic sculpture that is pre-programmed. You can see the size of this. It’s in the Bangkok Cultural Center. So it’s absolutely beautiful. It’s stunning. It has an amazing presence. This cannot function easily in an exhibition space. It functions well in a public space. It is made for the public. It is made for a public reception of the work itself. So each one of them are individually controlled silver motors that are then pre-programmed by the artist to create particular kinds of formations. These are absolutely spectacular. And I think it has come down from the... It was initially shown, but I think it’s come down already, the installation itself. Yeah, you can stop here, and I want to go to the next slide. Thank you. The next slide, please. I want to talk about the next two other projects. One in Bandung, in Indonesia, a media collective called Common Room. And another is House of Natural Fiber in Jogja, that I think Venza Christ is here, and he will talk about it shortly. But I wanted to highlight the difference. Again, I’m trying to show you the ways in which the technological availability, what kind of technologies available in those cities and countries changes the way in which the works are made and how a different kind of connection is enabled or a different kind of connection between people, technologies, and the city is enabled by the artist. So Common Room is really a collective space. It really runs a lot of technology-oriented but community engagement activities that involves education, that involves the use of technologies, teaching people new technologies, getting people together to mobilize them around important issues. So go to the next slide, please. This is where they are housed. They are housed in a small little place where they meet regularly. Next slide. This is a typical situation where they are sitting down and meeting and talking about projects that are interesting for them. And so the idea of community building and bringing the community together around issues that are important for them in the city is critical. The next slide, please. This is an interesting project that I thought that they did. It was really 36 frames. Basically, they gave cameras to young people from Bandung, and they also did a similar project in Helsinki. And they asked each of those groups of children to actually document their cities. Go out and take pictures of everything that you think is interesting for you. And these were all compiled. And they were trying to show them side by side to show the similarities and the differences between how young people imagine their own cities. So again, it is very low-tech, but it’s an interesting example of how media collectives, media art collectives, function in different parts of the world, especially in Asia. The next slide, please. The House of Natural Fiber. Because Venza Christ is going to be talking about it, I’m going to just leave it at talking very briefly about this. I’ve known of the House of Natural Fiber since 2000, 2001, and I’ve collaborated with them and I’ve discussed a variety of projects with them over the years. But they are an incredible group of artists and designers, people who are really interested in the community and engaging the community. Next slide, please. Venza, is this where you guys are right now? So this is the space that they’ve been housed in for a while. And I understand that they have two more spaces that they are occupying. But really, this is the kind of ground-up work that goes on in many of these communities that I think is important to appreciate because, you know, it’s easy to get bogged down by the technology and forget about what you are doing this for. And very often, you are doing it because you want to engage the community or vitalize your city. And that’s what projects like these do. The next slide, please. These are some of the community workshops that they do. They have a whole series of educational workshops. I think this is one of the physical computing workshops. Next slide, please. Okay, this is a group I talked about earlier, SARAI. The group SARAI was convened in 2001. It’s really an artist collective of about... At any point in time, they are between 15 to 200 people. They come together very often over a period of the year to develop projects that deals directly with the city. They are interested in New Delhi. They are based in New Delhi, and the city is their primary focus. They are new media-oriented. They are consistently looking at issues that are relevant to their city. And they are looking of ways to intervene in the city, transform the city, and also create policy and cultural dialogue around the city. Next slide, please. So this is... City as Studio was a three-year project that they did where they convened meetings and workshops for the community. And they brought in people from all across the world to come and do workshops with people in the community to think about how do we remake our city? How do we make our city different? And that’s why the idea behind the city as studio. Next slide, please. I wanted to spend a bit of time with this project, Cyber Mohala. Cyber Mohala... Mohala really means a kind of a transit space, alleyways. But Mohala is also a space where people can find some kind of respite or a refuge. So Cyber Mohala was a project that they started in 2001. It’s still continuing. It’s a project where they have been trying to empower young people to engage in new technologies. So basically, they create a small little space in a very poor neighborhood in New Delhi. And they set up computers with very easy-to-use software to create animations for young people to just find some place where they can be creative using new technologies. And it has really transformed that neighborhood. Young people look to that space as a space for them to gather. So it is their space as much as a space created by SARAI. The next slide, please. So this is a typical how it is set up. It’s set up as a place with computers where kids can come in and use it anytime they want. They usually have software that will help them to make work with Photoshop, work with animation, and they will create a whole lot of work around it. Next slide, please. So this was a project that was done as a result of Cyber Mohala. Two Austrian artists and architects were interested in how can we create a space that would allow for Cyber Mohala to function in New Delhi? So they came up with an architectural construction, working with the community. They came up with an architectural construction, working with SARAI and with Cyber Mohala group. They came up with this version. Next slide, please. So this is how it is internally. And on the left, you see an image of how it is set up in the place itself. So it’s meant to be somewhere between a library, a place where you can sit down and read, a place where you can sit down and work on your computer, a place you can sit and relax and meet... a place you can sit and relax and meet with the community. So again, a confluence, a bringing together of architecture, city planning, community engagement and an idea of how technology can function within spaces like this. Next slide, please. This group is Camp. Camp is an artist collective based out of Mumbai. They have been around since 2001 and they've done a whole series of projects over the years. I would like to show you two projects today. Next slide, please. So Motornama Roshanara is a project they started in 2010. So basically, Roshanara is an area in New Delhi which has gone through a lot of transformation because of urbanization and the changes in industrialization. Many of you who have visited New Delhi or know of New Delhi know that an important means of transportation in New Delhi is the rickshaw. There are about ninety thousand rickshaws today in New Delhi. And what Camp, the media collective did was they worked on creating a tourist map and they trained the rickshaw drivers, the rickshaw riders as guides to help tell the story of this particular place in New Delhi. It's a very interesting place exactly because it has changed so much, but not much has changed. Many jobs that used to be there have left. Many businesses that used to be there are not there anymore, but new businesses have come in. But what is interesting about using the rickshaw riders to tell the story is that they take the rickshaw riders, those wearing the red T-shirts, they are the rickshaw riders. They actually went around with the camp group. They went around different parts of Roshanara and they met with people to find out more about that area. And then they developed a set of stories about that area. So they will take people on a tour around that area to tell them the story of this area, both keeping the memory of that place alive but also finding a way to connect to the community that they are working in. The next slide, please. So when Marco earlier was talking about the issues of sustainability, I think this is a very interesting project that was done by the Camp people called Jyogeishwari Video Project. In many parts of Asia, even today, water and access to clean water is a major issue. And Camp as a media group was very interested in media activism, meaning how can we create media tools for people in the community to tell their story to policymakers, mobilize themselves around important social and cultural issues that matter to them. So Jyogeishwari Video Project was basically focused on the issue of clean water. And if you can play the video, please. So they made a total of twelve videos that each tell you a different story about water.
Ab dekhte hai, is zindagi ki ek chhala. Yi zindagi hum tak kaise pahusti hai? Vo kohn hai jo ye pani ko hum tak pahunchata hai? Hum tak aane se pehle, kuch chhut jata hai? Jangalo, pahado, vashti, o shehro, na jaane kitne mushkil se hai? Is shehre ki warta se bhi kya tez doarta hai ye pani?
If you can stop. So I'm going to end off there. But what I wanted to stress is it's important to understand that the idea of new technologies being used by artists, by social activists within cities is can very easily become complicated by us thinking that the technology is the one that we are focusing on. Actually, it is not. Technology is the last thing that people think about in many of these works. Because the technology is just a tool by which they use, a tool that they use to actually tell their stories, find ways to connect to the city and find ways to connect to the community. That continues to be the focus of and I think fortunately, that continues to be the focus of many of the artists, including the ones who are using high levels of technology as well as those who are using simple technologies. The story that I take away and I hope I have shared with you is the importance of understanding that the focus on the community and how the community becomes empowered by artists using technologies to drive those stories is the important thing. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Gunanam, for that. They need to make preparations for the next presentation, which will be given by Mr. Toshiyuki Inoko. And Mr. Inoko leads an artist group called Team Lab. From what I heard yesterday, Team Lab has 300 people. It's amazing. They engage in a broad range of activities. Typically, there's art and then they are involved in creation of commercials or some work is product related. I don't know what the company does really as a whole picture. I don't know what they do. Gunanam is from Singapore and he mentioned that the Bienale in Singapore, the recent version, I believe it was last year, and Mr. Inoko was there and in the very top dark space of Singapore Museum, and it was as big as this room. And he used images to depict Edo period, a town scenery where the townspeople were dancing. And he made these images float into the space of the room. And it was sort of an interactive thing. And it was very well received. I saw it too. And the newspapers and the magazines took it up. It was on the front pages of the newspaper. So he's at the forefront of Cool Japan. Maybe he doesn't like the expression Cool Japan. But these are the kind of activities Mr. Inoko engages in in terms of technology. 4K monitors he used to announce things. And so he uses state-of-the-art technology. So I believe Mr. Inoko is ready. Over to you, Mr. Inoko, please.
Gomenasen, sumimasen.
Excuse me, sorry for that. Sorry about that. My name is Inoko from Team Lab. It's really not clear what Team Lab actually does. We have about 300 people in the office. There may be offices where I don't know. Maybe a little less than 400 actually work for Team Lab. Digital technology and creation. Mankind now has the digital concept. And mankind, I think, will be elevated to a new stage, I think. And we want to move mankind forward. And so innovation through technology and through art, changing the values of mankind. I think we believe very truly that this is going to happen. But that alone is not alone for us to win our daily bread. So that is why we're engaging in internet and other things. We have a lot of specialists. We have programmers, architects and CG animators. And all these people gather to engage in different projects. And we do many things. And so I'd like to take examples of things we're doing in connection with cities. That is what I hope to do. Projecting images onto clouds is what we've attempted to do here. Very simply, we took projectors there to project images. And we projected images onto the clouds in the air. We doodled on the clouds. This is what we did last year. We created a Christmas tree. It's in Fukuoka in Canal City where we created a Christmas tree. We built up LEDs. Maybe it's hard to understand. In a cylinder, we piled up LEDs to create a Christmas tree. And a sculpture is created which moves. And so we created a large moving Christmas tree. It's not just an animation. The people around would use their smartphones and they can throw ornaments onto the tree and it appears when they throw it. Like that. These are illustrations which people have thrown onto the tree, which attaches onto the tree. The same concept is used here for... We did a Christmas tree in the winter time. In the summer, we thought it should be fireworks. So we created, using the same concept, the fireworks. And the people around can use their smartphones. And you pick a screen and you choose or you create your own fireworks and you throw it. This is also 3D, not a plane. We did this one in the summertime. This is Kagawa in the Seto Inland Sea. And they always had water festivals here. They would make fountains out of the seawater. It's the scene of the Genpe-Yashima battle. And so the same battle is reproduced at this site. It's water, so you can see through to the other side. We've recreated the battle. At the Seto Inland Sea, we decided to go fishing using the water screen. There are several fishing poles and strings on the fishing poles. And you have the reel here. And when you catch a if a green fish is caught and if you have a green phone, then it starts vibrating, telling you that you've caught a fish. And if everybody rotates their mobile phone, you can pull up the fish and you finally get the fish onto your screen on the mobile phone. It seems a little bizarre, but there were lots of people who came. It was rather a bizarre scene. We do something which comes closer to pure art. Mr. Nanjo earlier explained about the Singapore Bienale in which we presented. These are holograms, life-size holograms of people. And the audience can walk through. And each of these softwares are independent and they're freely playing instruments or dancing. But they are influenced by people around them and they are also influenced by those around them. So there is sort of a harmony. In the end, the rhythm also becomes unified and it becomes an orchestra. When the audience come in, some jump for joy when they find an audience. And the impact of that is felt and then the harmony is lost. When the audience is quiet, then the figures influence each other and they are all in harmony. Harmony is established to finally become an orchestra. And this will appear again later on. Hologram life-size, realistic artwork. These are actually possible. I will talk about this later on, so please keep this in mind. This is at the Tokyo Museum of Modern Art in the summertime. This is a space art exhibition. And this is life-size man-made satellite model. And we had a series of artwork on waterfalls. And the way we make waterfalls is that you find something to hit the waterfall. And this time, we used the man-made satellite. This was incorporated onto the computer 3D and we would splash water onto it. And we do a physical simulation. And as a result of the physical simulation, the water particles move to draw lines. And the collection of lines... And the collection of lines make up the waterfall. And we place the actual thing in the space in the room and we do a projection. This is a series of artworks which we did. The man-made satellite has gravity. So the water particles roam around the satellite. And you can apply that to the city. This is Saga Castle. There's a castle called Saga Castle. And we took the 3D data first and calculated. And in the end, we projected. In the city, you can apply the same concept and it becomes an art form. This is rather graphic, but we're not called in as artists. We have pressure to collect a lot of people. The client does not want art, but they want people to gather. And that's what we're asked to do. The water screen, the latter part was art. We're not being paid to do artwork. We have to create things like the reel to attract a lot of people. Otherwise, it'll be criticized by the client. We wanted just to do the waterfall, but that alone wasn't sufficient to make the client happy. So we create a lot of cannons. Saga Castle during the Meiji Restoration Period was known for the only site where they had Western-style cannons. Or there were some blueprints of these cannons which were left from the time. And so we used it. The cannons in the middle have a trampoline. And this is the Team Lab trampoline cannon. When you jump on the trampoline, it makes a noise. And if you jump three times, something is launched onto the castle which makes the castle fall. The cannons are launched toward the castle and the castle falls. We were called in sometimes to do pure art. And this is what we have done. A huge space was created. And this is an art space which we created. "People and Flowers" is the name of the work. Even without people, flowers grow and they die. And that's repeated forever. But in relation to the spectators, the artwork changes. If you go too close to the artwork, the flowers scatter. The flowers die sooner than it would if the people hadn't approached them. This is... I don't know what this is, actually. It's a certain country in Asia which they're creating. And it will be released in December or so. It's a huge chunk of LED. And there are people on the top. It's a huge mass of LED. And there's a big mass of LED at the bottom as well. And you can walk on it. It's all interactive. Physical simulation is done real-time. So when people stand on it, the waters flow away from it, from away from the feet. Where people stand, there are more flowers. And when people approach, the birds react. And up in the air... Up in the air, you have masses of LED. And the concept is the same as that of the Christmas tree. There are LEDs 3D in very high density. And you can create sculptures of light. And this is the sculptor of clouds. And the sculptor which depicts a cloud flows from left to right. A 3D sculptor of the clouds. This is at House Tembus. There's a long canal there. And around the canal, there were trees planted. We decided to make this entire canal a piece of art. And this is a permanent artwork since September. The trees are lit up from the bottom. When people approach the trees, the color changes. And when the tree changes its color, it influences the other trees to become the same color. And the colors change from one tree to the other. The trees are influenced. It doesn't matter where the change in color starts. When someone approaches a tree, the tree changes color, which in turn influences all the other trees to change colors. So the entire canal is an artwork. I showed you the canal earlier. And you could see that, actually, there were street lamps there. And of course, cars passed. But by lighting up the trees, we can ensure that there's enough illumination. And so there's no longer need for street lamps. And so they were taken away. What I wanted to say, actually, was you have public objects like street lamps. And because they're public, the greatest common denominator type of approach is taken. And these objects tend to be boring. But if you use a digital control, you can perceive what the site is like. And you can make changes depending on the situation. And so while guaranteeing that these public functions are served, you can also add an artistic aspect to it. In the future, there'll be art interspersed, not in cities, but the city itself becomes an art form, rather than art being interspersed in the cities. That is what I think will happen. So on the city and art, this is our approach and our thinking. What we did at the Singapore Biennale could be done in the cities. And you can have holograms in the cities. Although I didn't show this one to you today, this is an interactive installation artwork in the city. And it's fine if these things are found in cities. When you think of cities... And since I am talking about the city and art in Tokyo, I'd like to talk about the 2020 Olympic and Paralympic Games. And I believe that perhaps there'll be a complete mental switch-over in the next Olympic Games. Leaving aside the technicalities. The 20th century is where the mass media were central. All the contents were such that they were for spectators. They were for spectators to watch. But now with digital media and the network, what you look at, just being spectators is what people aren't interested in. They want to participate. So in Facebook and in Twitter, they want to participate. Digital is such that the city itself becomes media. So it's more of an experience, rather than listening to CDs. People go to live performances. So there's a rapid, quick shift into participatory art. The Olympic Games are a typical spectator kind of thing. But since this is a festival of the city, maybe we should change it to a participatory event. Maybe we can change it back to become a participatory event. For example, the opening ceremony. Let's skip the opening ceremony. That is a stage-type of, spectator-type of Olympic Games. To change that to participatory or experience-type of event. And there are different things possible to enable that to happen. This is a smartphone. Maybe you can't see. There's a candle. It's not lit yet. The candle is not lit. So you see a candle which is not lit. So I have a candle which is lit here. And if we put them close together, the other candle is lit. Say you have something like this. And you use something similar. And for example, torch relays. In the past, only selected people were torch carriers and other people were watching. But if you're doing a torch relay in the city, all of the residents should have torches. Maybe even make-believe or toy torches. When the real torch comes, if there are people on the streets with toy torches... Here's the real torch carrier. And then there are people around him with toy torches. And they all light up. And when the people in the front see their candles light up, the people behind them or next to them's candles also light up. And since these are digital devices, you can control it after they've been lit. So you can produce images like this. Or since if there are lots of people, you can have... And all of the torches are lit, you can produce a gigantic image. For example, for the opening. In the past, openings were such that the stadium was a stage. It was a stage-type of performance. There were actors on stage in the stadium. And there were spectators. The audience were just watching. And people watching on television would have cameras which show the performance as if they were actually on the scene. Stages are such that you have scene one and scene two and scene three. When scene one is over, the stage changes, the actors change, and there's scene two. And then when that's over, the actors and the stage props also change. And that's how the story goes. But since most of the people watch things through the media, in the city, you can separate the scenes. And people who use the media to watch, when scene one is over, then you can switch cameras to scene two and scene three. In the cities, you can divide by scene. Each scene becomes a huge art installation. For example, when the opening is over, each of the scene becomes a huge art installation. And you can keep it during the Olympic game season. For example, it could be something like this. This is one scene, and it's an art installation. That's the beginning of the opening. And the actors can act here and you use the video to film it. But then, other than that, after that, people can come here and experience the art. And when they experience all of the art, automatically, for example, it can be captured as an image. And if you experience all of the art, when you receive the video at a glance, it isn't different from the opening scene of the Olympic Games. But you are there because you've had video pictures taken of when you were there. So it seems as if you were actually present in the opening ceremony. In the past, on the stadium or on the spectator seats of the stadium, you would watch tiny athletes perform or you would watch things on the television. But it's actually a scanning process which is very fast, which enables you to see things on television. Say if you use a hologram in the city and the real-time, you do a relay. This is in Shibuya of an athlete performing. And you see that he can't enter Starbucks. He would go over the Starbucks, a pole vault athlete. So you sort of gain a different experience. You can see that he can't go into Starbucks. And you can use present-day technology to do this. And you can relay this real-time. And the relay is also interesting. But after the relay, this can be replayed over and over. Maybe not a pole vault, but a 100-meter race, a running race. You can run together with the athlete. And it's automatically filmed and you receive a video. And the camera work as if it's the final race. And you yourself are taking part in this race. And you yourself are taking part in this race. And your part only finishes at thirty meters. And you can really participate and experience when you do something like this. I'm lost as to what I really wanted to say. But this is the way it is. Thank you. Sorry. Thank you very much.
Well, he was an actor. Very interesting talk. So if you watch those images, you can see that those things are in store. And presentations for the Olympics, if he had more, we would have liked to see more. And at the Olympics, if these things really materialize, then we can really create a unique presentation that this characteristics of Japan representing a new age Olympics. And now let's hear from the third speaker, Mr. Mizuguchi. Mr. Mizuguchi is a game designer. And in the field of games, he is known as a genius, a master. And he now teaches at the university. And I'm not knowledgeable about the game industry. But in the virtual space, you can create cities as if you're an architect. And the people who are playing the games, the brains of these people, maybe that's like an architectural space. So there could be such various similarities in terms of space. So let's hear about that from Mr. Mizuguchi. Thank you very much. It's been about twenty-four years. I've been making games. And there are some games that are different from what you're familiar with. These are not RPGs. And my motivation was to create a game that incorporates synesthesia. So you have your various senses. And I wanted to create a game where you could feel multiple senses in a complex manner. And recently, I've been involved in producing music and video, providing live performances. And as Mr. Nanjo said, I also teach at the Keio University. From two years ago, I've been teaching at the Keio University Graduate School of Media Design. So I'd like to show you what I've been doing for the first ten minutes. And then I'd like to talk about the city. Well, city is not something that is familiar, that I'm familiar with. I've never tackled that directly. But I'd like to tell you what I think about it and like to apply what I've accumulated in the context of city. So I'd like to spend ten, fifteen minutes for that. So this is 2001 game, Rez. It's a shooting game. So the effects become sort of music, making you feel good. So about thirteen years ago, I created this game. So you just play randomly. But the sound effects automatically is turned into music. We call it quantization. So random bits lined up and then it's replayed. So that's a program we wrote. And that turns into a positive tune. And so there's this chemistry that makes you feel better. So there's also vibrations. So if you're good at the game, you get the music that is more pleasant. And as you play, it becomes unclear whether you're playing a game or you're creating music. So that's one thing that we did. So this was a sort of a sequel at TEDx Tokyo in 2011, when I gave a presentation, I did a live performance. So no longer do you use a controller. Like a conductor, you play a game. So there is this camera sensor called Kinect from Microsoft. And more than 10 million units have sold worldwide. Maybe not so common in Japan, but in the Western markets, European, American markets, it's sold quite well. It's not a controller. It actually has a camera. So you're standing in front of that camera and you move your hand. And the Kinect will sense real time where your hand is. I'm not wearing anything. And so you just move your hand, wave your hand. Well, now what you're doing here is that you are purifying the world which has been infected with a virus. So that's the game that I created. And there is sound effects and visual effects accompanying that. And that is replayed as sort of a musical melody. And so as you saw with Rez, the more you play, the more you can enjoy being a conductor. And the more pleasant sounding music comes out of the game as you play along. And this sold fairly well. Rez didn't sell so well. But it won many awards. And at the Culture Media Awards by the Agency of Culture, won an award. And received an art award for the first time as a game. And so it was a starting point for me. But The Child of Eden, eight hundred thousand copies sold overseas. So the number of people who have experienced this kind of game is quite large. And so as a media, I think it's a powerful base. Now, this is not a game project, what I will show you next. But in 2007, seven years ago, I guess, there was the Live Earth. So Al Gore, the former Vice President of the United States, well, he called on a hundred artists to join him to combat the climate change. And on July 7th, on the seven continents, a hundred artists will do a performance in a relay during that one day. So it was a global event, very large event. And at the opening of the Tokyo event, there is a Genki Rockets, which is a musical unit that I sponsor. So we were asked to do a live performance. So I'm a musical artist as well. So I tried to combine music and visuals. So that's the unit that I have. And there's a girl singer, but actually she's not a real person. In 2019, at the International Space Station, she was born. So she's the first human being born outside of the Earth. So there's sort of a 300-page novel, which is the base. And I haven't published it yet. But I wrote about sixty songs based on that novel. And we perform as artists. That is the Genki Rockets. So based on Mr. Al Gore's philosophy, as Mr. Inoko showed you some holograms, we had this at the Makuhari Mesa, a very large exhibition hall. On that stage, we had the screen, large screen. And we had this special German-coated film. And we did a performance. So please watch. So she is talking to the audience from the future. That's the setting here. No, she hasn't actually visited Earth yet.
And no breeze. You are always surrounded by the breeze. The breeze I see from here, spinning around the Earth. The breeze has no border. I always dream of the breeze.
So after she performed, we called Mr. Al Gore to appear. So so it seems that hundreds of millions of people were watching. And Mr. Al Gore sent out a message through a hologram.
What an amazing role to do. I love to stand here on this stage in Tokyo and speak you in holographic form. It is astounding that in just these recent few decades, we have seen the invention of technologies that enable us to connect and instantly communicate.
So at this time, Mr. Al Gore was actually in New York. One week before the Live Earth, I went to New York to shoot a video of Mr. Al Gore. And on that day, he actually was participating from New York. What I wanted to do, I think Mr. Inoko would do this sometime in the future, we wanted to do a real time, well, at 4K or HD, at that time was HD. So we wanted to do a high-resolution holographic image of him talking to the audience. And he says, "Isn't that right, Madonna?" And then you can have a hologram of Madonna in London or a bono of U2 to also appear. So to have that kind of a real-time holographic interaction on the stage, that's something that we wanted to do. But it was too early in terms of technological maturation. But there's always technological innovation. So I think that is going to become possible in the future. And I don't have time, but I have most experience in designing interactive things. I think I have a lot of experience there, so including games. What kind of interactive things have we been making? That's what I give a lot of thought to. Because you have to understand why you make those things or else you won't be able to move forward. You, well, in music, you play and you have a session. And people raise their hand and there's this groove. And people feel good. And we want to analyze why people feel that kind of a pleasure or else we won't be able to design the next thing. So that's the harsh environment that we work in. And we have learned many things. And in the past two years, I stopped creating and I focused on teaching at university and spending time thinking. And that's what I would like to share with you. So this is what we have been designing all along. That is, well, desire and instincts. Some innate, some acquired. You have a lot of desires and instincts based on experience. And that becomes motivation for your actions. I think that you can understand from your experience. So that is what we focus on. And what is our world made of? So this is like a Zen question. But my answer to this is as follows. This is what I realized recently. It is that, well, there are things you can see, there are things you can't. We create various things. And behind them, there is always the wants and intentions. There are positive and negative wants. Some people, well, we have all kinds of wants. We want to be alone, but we want to be with people. So sometimes they are contradictory. But we have those various wants and we live with them. So I think you can say that our world is made of things that human wants have externalized, like that's externalized human wants. So this building has been designed for someone. Automobiles, roads, they have been thought of and designed for someone. And it's same for tangible and intangible things. And of course, we exclude complete nature, the pure nature. Whenever there's human intervention, we can say that it's externalized human. we can say that it's externalized human wants. And... So... They say that we are externalizing human wants. And it is wants that we are externalizing. So let's make something that we can see far away. No, that's not the reason why we make a telescope. Because we want to see or we want to fly, that we make airplanes. And soon as people fly, there are new wants. So the next want is you want to carry a lot of people and you want to build an airline or you want to bomb your enemy. So I think that's another want. So it expands and then a chemistry or chemical reaction is born. So I think that there are three desires. So desire for yourself or desire for someone else or for some other party. So it could be for a company or for your country, that kind of a group. Or, and then there are the others. It could be for the environment, for some people, their god, their creator. So people have wants to realize something for yourself or for someone else. So you're always living, trying to materialize that kind of a want. And various scholars have studied wants. And Steve Rees has categorized these wants into 16. And in English, here they are. And in the past two or three years, I've held workshops to visualize wants. So I came up with this method and we did this 40 times. And every time, 30, 40 people participate. And you see the post-its on the wall. More than 2,000 wants or desires are visualized. And when you see that, you can see what kind of wants people have or what kind of categories of desires people have that becomes clear in a day or two. And then based on that, how can you design creative things is what we work on in these workshops. So if you repeat this process, you can start to see various things, you start to learn various things. And so wants can be factorized into hidden wants. Say you have a want that you want a car. If you ask why you want a car, it's typical that there are so many sub-wants or hidden wants that comprise that want. So I won't go into the detail because of time. Here, this is a Maslow's Pyramid. So at the top is acceptance. Well, red is food, water, safety. And then there is income. The green part is the acceptance or self-esteem. So people want to be accepted. And then above that, there is self-actualization and creativity. So I think there is a border between needs and wants at around this level. So and before and after internet, I think our desires and wants have grown. So we wanted acceptance always, but that was within family or in the company or in your group. But now with Facebook, you want people to acknowledge you. And so we've opened the door of our desires. We want people to like us on Facebook. And a blue part is self-realization and creativity. And, well, crowdfunding and 3D printers and Hatsune Miku. So there's a lot of creative movement that's become a major trend, so which is part of that blue tip of the pyramid. So design shows how or design is about designing how to realize the wants. And I think that circulations and chemical reactions are quite important in designing interactivity. And from here, I should end in three minutes. So I will summarize in three minutes. From here, I talk about urban design. So when you apply this idea on urban design, what do you get? So urban design is engineering a path based on how to actualize people's wants. And you need to generate the circulations of energy and support chemical reactions. So what kind of futures, what kind of cities can we envision? Well, when you think about that, you go to the fundamental question. What is a city? When you think about wants, whose wants is to circulate? What are its attributes? That's what you have to think about. Now, when we think about cities, we think about buildings, the hardware, and things, tangible things, material things in English perhaps. Is that what makes up a city or is it the situations? So I wrote situations in English, koto in Japanese. Or is it people? It's probably all of the above. And how can we engender engagement? That, I think, is the basis from which you need to do urban design going forward. Now, engagement is sort of like a connection. And I think this is a very important keyword going forward. So if you're connected to someone, then it's about yourself. If you're a part of something, then it's no longer something that you're disinterested in. And there are wants of residents, visitors and tourists, wants of governments. When you think about all these wants, when you, well, who, whose city is it? Well, it's owned by these various actors. And how can you design the circulation and the chemical reaction amongst all these parties, I think, is the important thing. And some things you don't really think about in your daily lives. What is culture is something that I gave some thought to. So I think culture is all about accumulation of time. So when you go to Kyoto, you really enjoy it because there is that time or history that is accumulated there. And it's a memory of experience is also part of that time by individuals and by groups. And Tokyo has been destroyed by the earthquake and by air raids. And there have been resets. Now, when we think about our image 50 or 100 years from now, we should have an image. And whether you have a smartphone or glass, doesn't matter what device you use. Culture is something that is not swayed by device trends. It's there, we need to create a culture that accumulates over 50, 100 years. Can we do that with digital technology? When you think about that, you can see that the 2020s only a passing point for Tokyo. So this is the final summary. I talk about Tokyo digital architecture. So digital realm should be part of the urban architecture. I think that we should share that idea. So amongst residents, visitors, why don't we all work together to build the city, to accumulate the experience and to create Tokyo together? And that, I think, is probably going to be the architecture that does not decay, that transcends time. So what is that non-decaying, time-transcending architecture? So we have human wants to leave something behind for eternity. And I think a city is creative and it's organic. So I think what may be needed is a redefinition of the city. So I want to show you this graphic here. It's an experiment by University of Washington. It's called Building Rome in a Day. Usually say that you can't build a Rome in a day, but that's what they're doing here. So this is a YouTube video. You see the black dots? So these are tourists who visited Dubrovnik, a tourist city in Croatia. So they take photos. And the orientation of the camera, position of the camera is calibrated. So that calibration data and 2D image is collected. And then, like we saw with the Kinect, you can automatically create 3D images. So that's the gist of this experiment. So there is no creator with an intention. But if many people come to Tokyo, they take photos, then in a real time, in real time, you can record Tokyo in 3D. And then you can watch this over time, over the course of time. Then you can have endless, limitless, always accumulating city like a digital Gaudi. So that in the, that behind the scenes of the real architectural city. And so on YouTube, I found this. It's a very old video, Tokyo 80 years ago. So that's the 10th year of Shoah. And so that's 10 years before it was bombed in the war. And you can see this, that Tokyo was an astonishing city. And later, you'll see Marunouchi district, not so different in terms of the ambience from what we know today. So this is 80 years ago. But when you think about 80 years from now in the future, we're inputting various things and we're accumulating. And that is going to benefit the future generations. So I think that we need to start working. And so if you go to that space and you use a smartphone and if you can, well, it will probably be realized that you'll be able to see old image with the current image in your smartphone. So this is Marunouchi. So I'm running out of time, so I need to close. But one last photo. My friend uploaded this on Facebook. His father, when he visited Italy, took this photo. And so he took the photo at the same exact location and he uploaded that photo. I was quite moved. So as a want, well, in the 20th century, we have overcome space and transcended space. But now, there's going to be a want to try to transcend time. You want to connect over time or you want to talk or have dialogue over time. Perhaps your great-grandfather 50 years ago, when he was your age, you want to hear his message. I think that kind of thing will become reality in the future. So today's topic is media art goes public. I believe that media art engages people across time and space dimensions. I think there are a lot of possibilities in that regard. Thank you and sorry for going over time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mizuguchi. Now, we would like to move into the panel discussion. And may I invite the panelists to move up onto the stage? Thank you. So Mr. Nanjo, please, over to you. We started with the game and then at the very end, we moved into philosophy. Well, it was wow, indeed amazing. It was so interesting and so fascinating. I'm sure people in the audience must have forgot the time. But we have gone at length over the time allocated. So I don't think much time is left for the discussion. But if there are any questions that you would like to ask your fellow panelists as you listen to their presentation, perhaps Mr. Gunalan, do you have any questions to your other panelists? Mr. Gunalan, I'm sure you have listened to their presentation. This is the first time that you have contacted their production. So what is your impression?
For Inoko-san, one of the things that I was wondering about is you talked about the fact that for the project you did with that on the waterfall. And you said that the place they hired you to, your company, to actually do the project and bring a lot of people there, right? It was, the project was to bring people and it was not an art project. So how do you weigh, how do you deal with the fact that sometimes you have to deal with projects that are art and sometimes that you have to make things that are, for want of a better word, commercial? Meaning where it's about tourism or it's about bringing people, it's about spectacle, yeah, so.
Then, Mr. Inoko, would you like to respond? I believe the interpretation is already over. Yes, minutes ago? Yes, he is an actor. He really acts. I don't think there is any good balance between the two. I must confess, I'm not really sure whether that is true or not. But being commercial and the pure art, is there any borderline between the two? Maybe the line is not that clear-cut. If you're skewed to one of the two, then it would be clear. But I don't think it's, in most cases, it will be on the borderline. So I don't think you can say that this is pure art or this is pure commercial. So, Mr. Inoko, I believe in your case, the two are connected. Yes, there is a connection and it is a continuum, if I may say so. Well, if the silence is too long, I don't think people will be able to be too patient. I don't think they will be patient enough. Yes, there is a connection and it is a continuum, so to speak. But inside myself, there is a want that I would like to create an art. But then... I don't think that I will be, always be able to create the art that I want because of money, financial problems. And it could be other problems as well. For example, if I am invited to a pure art event, pure artistic event, if there is something that I would like to create, I have an idea and I have an ideal that I would like to create. But then, the organizer may have another motivation. They would like to have many people to visit the site, the event. So if I try to create something that I want genuinely, that may not be attractive to the others. So I have to create something that would be enjoyable, but many. So maybe I can have two products side by side. You want it to be approved. According to Mr. Mizuguchi's presentation, you would like to be approved and recognized by others, right? You do have that want. You want to be able to please others.
I'm being paid after all. And so if the team level is paid and no one comes, then we won't have the next job, it won't be viable. Then let's move on. Mr. Mizuguchi, what kind of work do you do now? I'm a freelance almost. I do work on an individual basis. Starting next year, I want to start something. I have a wish list, which is becoming longer, so I want to get busy on those. The things that you have created before, depending on the game, it's an interactive artwork, some of them are artworks. Have you ever thought of it that way? Yes, what I'm creating, like Mr. Inoko was saying before, I do want things to sell, the things I create. I want to, I want, I hope that it sells. I want many people to experience it. And so rather than the sales numbers, if the proceeds increase, that's good. But I want, my central concern is that many people experience it. My awareness is that I'm creating a form of entertainment. But while I'm creating something, in the midst of creating something, I tend to wonder as to what this is for. I go into depth. There's a clear demarcation between what is interesting and what is not. Art is... Art is something that you can do it in a vague way with entertainment. If something is boring, people reject it right away. So we have to fight that. So we're not allowed to fail when we're creating games. And that is the kind of designing we're asked to do. Then you think about, why do people laugh at this juncture? Or why is there a feel-good factor in certain places? Why are people so excited here? You tend to keep asking yourself, why, why, why? And sometimes when I look back, it's a very artistic approach in many cases. It ends up being that way. If people ask me if game is an art, I would say it's an entertainment. But in the process of creation, there's a lot of artistic element. The modern art is something that you don't feel that artists want to really sell when you look at modern pieces of artwork. And they're rather lax about it. Games are a more severe world where you have to pursue, well, what you, the actual product that you create is naturally different between artwork and games or entertainment products.
The definition of art, this will be too lengthy a discussion, I'm sure. So there are all sorts of different wants involved in the periphery of even artwork, right? Maybe I should go back. The theme of the, theme of the session is media art goes public. So what was shown to us was very clear in our direction to go, what Mr. Inoko has shown us, that there are great expectations. And I'm sure there are many artists going for the same direction, that you need to go out into the public to try to use media for other purposes. I'm not really sure whether I can say this or not because I don't know about the other people. But what about Mr. Gunalan, to go into the public?
Mizuguchi-san was talking about how his City of Eden game actually sold 800,000 copies. Now, 800,000, I cannot think of any art exhibition that would have had that many people attending it. Now, it's interesting because games and the kinds of large-scale projects that Inokusan is doing are actually engaging larger publics and in a way that is very immersive, entertaining, getting them to appreciate a lot of things that, you know, artists wish sometimes that people would get when they are going to see their works in an exhibition. So I think that there is a very different kind of public that is being opened up by the kind of work that both of you are doing. And I think that it's, it's partly because of the kind of technology you're using, but partly also because that the way you are distributing it, the way you are presenting it allows for a larger number of people to engage it much more easily than people who have to pay for a ticket and go into an exhibition space. So I really think that going out into the city, having a work that is being distributed more widely actually creates a different kind of public. Now, one could argue, well, is it really artistic experience that the people are having? I think that it's debatable.
As you say, you can access a broad public. And when you do that, art goes out of the exhibition hall and goes into town. So a different, completely different circumstance arises. And it's a process of education in a way. And you give people a new experience and you broaden the market. That direction is very important in this age, I think. But what can't be denied is that you, in the past, you created small drawings and there were only a few people that liked these drawings. And that happens. In the future, however, this may be something that makes a mark in history later on, although it's only liked by a few people at that moment. In this present day and age, technology is very developed and that gives rise to new possibilities. And then in such an age, art would use that technology to open up new avenues. I don't intend to draw a conclusion from all of this, but you have electric guitars. When they first emerged, there was a lot of debate. Some people thought it was outrageous. It wasn't music, some said. And then some said, the future lies in this instrument, others would say. So it's, there are both views. And in the past, the potential and possibilities of music was broadened because of the electric guitar. And I think the same thing might happen with regard to art. We've overrun the time considerably, so we won't take questions from the floor. So there's nothing that comes close to a conclusion. But I hope that everyone has been inspired in many ways. Thank you very much, everyone.